Mr. Spivey?
Excused.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Baines?
Excused.
Mr. Baggett?
Here.
Thank you. So a quorum of the Board of Education is present. The regularly scheduled meeting of February 1st, 2021 is called to order will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand and face the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board. A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Mr. Turner to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Hearing no motion to amend, we will have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Aye.
We do not have any public speakers registered for this evening, so we'll move to consent agenda announcements. Are there any consent agenda announcements?
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everyone. Mr. White was kind enough to allow me to start things off this evening and say a few words about one of our retirees on the agenda, Jill Gurrell. Jill Gurrell started in our district August 25th, 1993 totaling 28 years in the school district of La Crosse. All 28 years. And just read a couple of words that, you know how this works. I usually read something that I wrote, so here we go. Mrs. Gurrell is vividly aware of the needs for students to feel connections in areas such as inclusion, feelings of sense of control, affection, and competency. That said, Jill works resolutely to glean insights as to individual students' abilities, dispositions, background experiences, and goals. In turn, Jill Gurrell implements planning and organizational principles that afford students myriad opportunities to experience success via their personal profiles. One of the other things I would just add about Mrs. Gurrell, if you've had a chance to be around her, you understand that she radiates energy like the sun, and she brought that in her classroom each and every day. So want to congratulate Mrs. Gurrell on a tremendous career. We do have one other retiree on the agenda tonight of note. I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Spring to say just a few words.
So I have the honor to talk about Mark. And Mark has been with education for 39 years. Thirty-five of those years have been right here in the school district of La Crosse. He started as a sixth grade teacher in the district in 1984 at Longfellow Middle School, and he also coached basketball and track. And then in 1990, he went on to be the Hinchin Elementary School principal for 26 years. The district supported him in serving on the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators' Board of Directors, and he served as president of OSA in 2003, 2004. Mark also served on the National Association of Elementary School Principals Board of Directors from 2010 to 2016, and as the NAESP president in 2014-15. Since April 2016, he has been the Human Resource Director for the district, which is the same year I started with the district. As famous scientist, Dr. Carl Sagan once said, "You have to know the past to understand the present." And Mark's knowledge of this district's history has been invaluable to me and other newcomers in the district. Since that time five years ago, Mark has embraced his role as HR director and has grown in his knowledge of everything HR-related. He is a team player on every level, he is naturally friendly and kind, and a leader among leaders. His personality and intelligence have been a good match for his role as HR director, and his advocacy of public school education has been evident throughout his career. I've come to respect Mark as someone who approaches every challenge with integrity and emotional intelligence. And although there are many people in this district who have known Mark much longer than me, I believe they would all agree that when Mark commits to something, anything, be it teacher, or coach, principal, HR director, professional leadership roles, or personal commitments, he gives it his all. I hold Mark in the highest esteem as a colleague and friend, and I thank you, Mark, for serving the school district of La Crosse for so long and so well. You will be missed, but we wish for you many years of joy and good health in retirement and always. So thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Spring. So the consent agenda is a mechanism that's used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that members wish to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none.
Consent agenda as presented.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Mr. Turner to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented. We'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Aye.
So we'll now move to the Board Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como to approve the items on the Board's Consent Agenda as presented unless members want to remove any items. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Aye.
So we'll now move to the Board Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como to approve the items on the Board's Consent Agenda as presented unless members want to remove any items. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Aye.
So we'll now move to the information portion of the meeting, and we're going to begin with Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE3: Treatment of Community Stakeholders.
Hello, everyone. I present OE3 Monitoring Report today. As with the others, I'll run through the report itself, and then as you think of items, maybe we can hold those to the end, but if you also feel like interjecting, don't be hesitant. So OE3 is about treatment of community stakeholders and looking at the various ways that our operations impact that area. So OE3.1 is the superintendent will protect confidential information. And indicator one is there's no unauthorized release of confidential information in the district as evidenced by the lack of complaints resulting from such release. We had no complaints received regarding unauthorized release of confidential information for the year period from when this report was generated. Indicator two is there's no grievance or legal action taken against the district for unauthorized release of confidential information, and once again, we had no grievances or legal action taken against the district for this reason. With most of these, we're documenting something that isn't there, so there's a compliance letter for almost everyone that kind of goes into the details about each of these. Indicator three, no documented breaches resulting in an outside entity gaining unauthorized access to district data. Once again, we had no documented breaches. In examining this one, we had had a breach a couple of, like 18 months ago, but not in the last 12-month period. OE3.2 addresses effectively handle complaints. Indicator one is the formal complaint process is made available to the public and communicated to complainants when a formal complaint is made. For this particular indicator, we just approved a complaint process, a formal complaint process through our administrative policies, just prior to the completion of this year-long period. So there may be some question as to whether or not we met that goal as far as that indicator. Something else that we looked at were the other ways in which our community and our stakeholders have opportunities to complain, so to speak, and in the attached compliance documentation letter that lists numerous policies where individuals have prescribed methods of complaining if they have an issue with something that's going on in the school district. So while there isn't a universal formal complaint process, there are numerous other ways for more specific items that complainants can come forward. And one of the things I was interested in is once again that lack of evidence. We didn't have any complaints about how to complain. People felt like they were able to find a way to redress their complaints throughout this last year-long period as well. Indicator two was 100% of formal written complaints filed or investigated and resolved according to the district complaint policy in a fair and timely manner. We did not have a universal complaint process in place, but we had no grievances or other formal complaints that were not resolved according to our policy. OE3.3, the superintendent will respect and value individual differences of opinion. The district, so indicator one is the district provides multiple means for stakeholders or representative stakeholders to express their individual thoughts and ideas and give feedback and input into the direction of the district. So in the attached documentation, it indicates a couple of different ways that groups have opportunities to input their thoughts and ideas. So there were general opportunities, there were opportunities regarding the SRO review, which was a topic of great discussion this last year, opportunities regarding the learning mode of students during COVID, another significant item of discussion, opportunities regarding the development of the strategic plan for equity, which has been an item on my list, and then opportunities regarding the development of the long-range facilities plan. And so in each of those areas, I've listed the groups and in some cases dates where we have met in order to identify the ways in which we've given opportunities for stakeholders. And so we feel that on those general topics, we have a process in place, and on the specific topics, there was lots of opportunity for input and feel that we have, are compliant in that regard also. OE3.4, reasonably include people in decisions that affect them. Indicator one is the district meets regularly with unions that represent staff in the district. The compliance documentation letter indicates the myriad times that we meet with the union and other representative staff. We have three unions in the school district that represent staff, but we also meet with other representative groups as well in order to ensure that we hear issues and ideas from all of our employees. Indicator two is buildings have leadership teams that include staff members in their buildings and use these teams to aid in making decisions. We indicated a list of the building leadership teams, and as we were thinking about it, that's maybe not enough to get a real sense of whether or not they're actually included, that could just be a list of folks. As we kind of thought back over the last year, we did identify one complaint about a lack of involvement, and we've remedied that along the way as well. So that is, well, once again, where there's a lack of evidence, how do you seek that out in complaints is certainly one of those. Indicator three, the district cabinet meets regularly to address district-level issues. Cabinet is a recent term. Since I got here, there's been a number of terms, SAS, IRT, over the years, and so we indicated on the compliance letter the dates that those various groups met since, in this last year-long period, and it's probably been a lot more than has previously happened given COVID-19 and everything else that we've been going through. OE3.5, superintendent will provide open and honest communication in all written and interpersonal The indicator is there's no verified complaints of dishonest communication by district staff in reviewing our files and emails and whatnot. We did not find any evidence of dishonest communication by district staff. And then OE3.6, the superintendent will respond to requests for information deemed necessary to achieve board policies in a timely manner. And the indicator was there are no valid complaints against the district that it did not meet open records requests as defined by Wisconsin state law, and we had no complaints lodged against the district for that reason. So that is OE3.5, or OE3: Treatment of Community Stakeholders. Comments, thoughts, ideas?
Yeah, if you will. So in OE3.4, you said a complaint of involvement, a lack of involvement, if you will? How did we remedy that along the way, if you will?
Sure. On occasion, staff members will complain, you know, that they're not involved in decisions, you know, that affect them in the building, especially in light of COVID and some of these other things, there's been lots of opportunities to feel like folks were left out. And some of those are routine, and it's just a matter of timing, or maybe we haven't coordinated our efforts well enough. In other cases, it might arise to a level of like, hey, there's something there. And so one instance of that occurred while I've been here, and we ensured that the appropriate supervisor investigated that issue and kind of helped that building grow in terms of communication and involvement.
And parts of remedying, did you actually go back and talk to the staff, and did they tell you, okay, I think this is getting better, I feel better about the involvement process, if you will?
Yes, so that was our way to know if we'd made a difference, going back to the same staff members that had issues, to understand if the change we made made a difference.
Sure, awesome, thank you. I can't say remedy today.
It's a mask.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments about OE3? All right, we will move to the next item, Results Monitoring Report, R3.3 Involved For This Event.
Good evening. Tonight, we're looking at R3.3. It is actually our first results monitoring policy in action with data, so we'll take a look at that. So if you do have suggestions for format of how the data is presented, this would be a great opportunity, and I'd like to improve. R3.3 is demonstrate effective communication skills. We chose three different measures to do that. Two were writing. One had to do with the text-dependent analysis of grades three through eight on Wisconsin Forward. The other was a high school measure, was the ACT writing, to give a scope of writing across the district over the years. The third one was classroom participation on the school report card, and then I think there's some interesting data that we can talk about regarding that one as well, and it was if they are meeting developmental expectations or progressing towards expectations on the school report card, and we looked at quarter two. Breaking down each of the indicators in a little bit more detail, Wisconsin Forward Writing Assessment is an online writing assessment, meaning that students keyboard their answers in, which is an interesting way to write. Not everybody, especially our third graders or fourth graders, might be very comfortable in that format. It is an area that we work with keyboarding skills to help build that capacity as we go. If you look at our composite in La Crosse, we are three percentage points below the state average, and I think looking at the state average is a good way to measure progress because there is year-to-year variability in the Wisconsin Forward. Some years, we may go up, but it's not necessarily a measure of increased performance, but maybe the rigor of the test may be somewhat different. However, if we go up compared to the state average, that's a more tangible result. So having those two measures side by side helps with that. Of course, if you look at 2020, 21, those scores are NA. We did not take our Wisconsin State Assessment System assessments last year, so this year's results policies will have some holes in them if they are dependent on state data. But I wanted to at least show you the format a little bit, and so by going back to the previous year, and this isn't new data in any way, but it allows for a bit of thought on formatting. You can see we're generally pretty steady in third, fourth, seventh, and eighth grade, but we do have a dip in fifth and sixth grade. That is a transition conversation that we're talking about, how our fifth graders transition to sixth grade. It's an interesting time for many reasons in education. ELA-specific new standards have recently been released, so we are in the process of exploring the changes between the old standards and the new standards that will help with our instructional efforts, especially in fifth and sixth grade. So in all candor, it's really interesting with the Wisconsin Forward, they choose basically the same standard I've found every year that's assessed on that writing assessment. So each grade level may have 15 different standards, they pick the same one every year in each grade, and, you know, there may be some valid reasons for that, but it is an interesting quirk when it comes to the writing assessment. The Forward Exam disaggregated data, trying to break down the data by different reference groups, and you can see we have some wild variances and some gaps between some of our reference groups that are documented there. And on the back, you can see some more data as well, compared to students around the state. Our writing assessment at 11th grade is actually a pencil-paper assessment. The ACT this year is offering the opportunity to take an online ACT, and we do have La Crosse Polytechnic that You can see, we're generally pretty steady in third, fourth, seventh, and eighth grade, but we do have a dip in fifth and sixth grade. That is a transition conversation that we're talking about, how our fifth graders transition to sixth grade. It's an interesting time for many reasons in education. ELA-specific new standards have recently been released. So we are in the process of exploring the changes between the old standards and the new standards that will help with our instructional efforts, especially in fifth and sixth grade. So in all candor, it's really interesting with the Wisconsin Forward. They choose basically the same standard, I've found, every year that's assessed on that writing assessment. So each grade level may have 15 different standards. They pick the same one every year in each grade. And, you know, there may be some valid reasons for that, but it is an interesting quirk when it comes to the writing assessment. The Forward exam disaggregated data, trying to break down the data by different reference groups. And you can see, we have some wild variances and some gaps between some of our reference groups that are documented there. And on the back, you can see some more data as well, compared to students around the state. Our writing assessment at 11th grade is actually a pencil-paper assessment. The ACT this year is offering the opportunity to take an online ACT, and we do have La Crosse Polytechnic that has, they've raised their hand and said, we would like to try that. So it's a small sample to see how that experience is for our students, and that is if we do have state assessment testing this year. As of now, we are told to prepare that we are. So you can see on the ACT, our scores are just shy of the state average if you look at the aggregate data. And broken down by subgroup, you can see that in some cases, we're outperforming the state average and some right on it. So we can see our gaps close the longer our students stay in the system. In a different format, the test may be beneficial for our 11th grade students as well, because they do take this in the spring of their 11th grade year. The third indicator is a report card. Ninety percent of our elementary students in grades one through five will receive a mark of meets developmental expectations or progressing towards expectations on the school report card in the area of participates in classroom discussions and activities. So this gets into more than just writing, but actually how they interact in the classroom. This is a report card that goes home to parents, and it's a communication tool that we have to show progress, not just in writing, but in other way of participation. It's a particularly interesting data, I think, this year. We pulled the quarter-two data from last year and then, which is pre-pandemic, and then now the quarter-two. So this data is two weeks old. It is extremely recent, and it gives us a little bit of, a bit of an insight of what engagement looks like in a pandemic setting in our school. So you can generally see anywhere between a 5% to 10% dip this year with online learning or virtual learning for our students. And unfortunately, in some cases, our reference groups, that numbers exasperated by greater numbers of engagement. Those are the three indicators for the results policy 3.3. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah. So on indicator two, ACT writing, the reference groups, what reference groups are in the socio-economically disadvantaged status? What, like, what is the reference groups that makes up the socio-economics?
Anyone, any student in our district that qualifies for free and reduced lunch.
Okay. So you do break it down and desegregate it, if you will, between Hispanics, blacks, white. All of those could be essentially inside of that socio-economic disadvantaged status.
Absolutely. Same with English language learners, special education. Those students may show up in more than one place on here.
Got it. On it. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
I have a question. Thank you for that presentation, Dr. LaHecky. The question may actually be more for you, Dr. Engel. So if we think about, for example, in the first indicator, where Dr. LaHecky just included as a reference for us, the 2019 data, we're not, we're not going to be marking in compliance or not based on that clearly. So where there hasn't been any exams for this year, what are your thoughts about what would, what would probably work best for, if this came forward for monitoring?
In other words, it doesn't seem fair to mark not in compliance when we haven't actually been able to assess it. And this might be something we just need to think about and not decide in the moment, but this year may be unique in that respect.
Yeah, I think there's two options, you know, maybe more, but one could be, you know, some sort of like, not applicable this year, you know, in that particular area. And I think the most important thing, you know, for our public and others looking at this is to know why. So we would just be clear about the reason why we're not evaluating it this year, and it's, put that explanation there. The other is we could seek out other forms of information. We have other local progress monitoring data that would be less standardized, but may serve as other indicators in our progress. We wouldn't be able to assess it relative to the state very well, but may be able to assess it relative to the previous year. But even that being said, it's going to be pandemic data. So it's always going to have a giant asterisk nest next to it. And so without some sort of other comparable, I think it's really hard to use the data in any case. Just like when we went to the Badger exam from the WKCE and then switched to the Forward exam, there's a giant asterisk nest to that year. That'll be the case with last year's data, this year's data. You know, we're always going to have this weird blip, and it's always going to affect our results policies. So maybe a little more thought is warranted, because it's going to be a theme, I think, throughout this year.
Thank you. Dr. LaHecky, since you asked for feedback on the format, I like the format, and I appreciate how clear it is. Is there other feedback from board members on that? That's what you're asking for that as well, right?
I think that looks good. When we compare, I mean, like you said, it's going to be different this year, but I think the way you have it presented will be really clear and easily accessible to determine.
A question I would add would be how much one to two mil data would you like to see, knowing that it does add complexity to the report, but it might be meaningful to see a trend? Because we will bounce around a little bit when we look at data. But if you do look at a longer runway, you might get a clearer picture, but it's less clear. So it's kind of a trade-off.
I'm always partial to a three-year look at things, but I also understand the complexities of that. So I don't know if there's a good number, but I always think three years gives us a good view of where we've been and where we're going. The only other comment I'd have is the, I was a little alarmed by the school report card disaggregated data, just the dip. Because it could be because of the pandemic, it could be other things, but just seeing that dip really is an alarming thing to see and keeping an eye on what we can do, right, moving forward.
Are there any other questions or comments for Dr. LaHecky?
I have a question about how it was decided, what the goal was, that it would be greater than the state average.
Right. It, in, so every year, there's like a group that comes together to write the questions. And what we find is that some years, questions are a little more difficult. Some years, the standards that are tested actually change a little bit. So if you went from, with the Wisconsin Forward, you just don't get an apples-to-apples comparison. The standards that are assessed change, the complexity changes. But what doesn't change, in my opinion, is your performance compared to the rest of the state. Because now, hey, if the test was easier one year, then the state's score should go up, ours should go up accordingly, right? And so I think it gives a more accurate measure than if I just gave a raw, La Crosse-only score and made that the goal. So our goal is to get above the state average. And when we get above the state average, it's to continually get better and not rest on that.
Thank you.
Dr. LaHecky, have you seen the trend of other districts and how they're, if they're marking in compliance, or like, what are they doing for these very unprecedented times, being able to?
I can't say for this year. I honestly haven't.
And we can do some research and talk to the other coherent governance school districts and see what their process has been and get an idea of some.
I think that would be important, for sure, to see how we.
Thank you, Dr. LaHecky. All right. Next up, we've got the 2021 Wisconsin State Education Convention Report. So I understand Ms. Como, Ms. Leahy, and Mr. Corburg, Superintendent Engel, Dr. Hershey attended. I can go. Who's giving the report?
I'll go first. One of the sessions that I watched was proven tactics to increase community support, so it kind of goes along with OE 3. It kind of fell right in. And it's from Elm Brook School District, and they're a smaller school district than us, but they're doing some of the things that we're doing. But there was something that stood out to me just because of the year of just the political things that are happening. And what they do is they actually support all prospective board members by getting a, having a candidate forum for all of them so that they can be presented to the school and the district. And also, the parent group creates questions and answers, and then those are highlighted on the school district website. So if you ever have a question about any of the candidates, you go to the school district website, and all of them are listed there with answers to all of the questions. And I'd love to make it a broader thing. I mean, there's the city council that's happening, and there are mayor things. It's just, there's so much going on that it's nice that they take the time to centralize it. And then they actually send out postcards with those profiles. I don't know if that's something we would want to necessarily do in the school district because that's a cost to us, but at least having that ability to put that information on our website so that our community can see the candidates and what they are representing and why they want to represent the school district of La Crosse. So it was just kind of a perfect timing niche thing that I was like, that's really nice. That's just that one extra step of supporting everyone. No, no, I don't agree with you, so I'm not going to put your stuff on there, but just across the board, supporting everyone.
You know, I'm going to respond to that just so we don't get lost when we come back. And, you know, since district-wide parents has the questions that they ask of prospective board members and brings them in the spring, it might just be a matter of making that available on the website since those questions are already asked of candidates.
Right, right.
And then the other thing is, just as an FYI for the board, my understanding is that the League of Women Voters will be putting on a form. Now, in the past, we, there hasn't been one every year. In fact, when I ran, I don't think there's been one in a very long time, at least according to the president at the time. And we made Hogan available for that to happen. It was open to the public. And we have also said we will allow them to, they're going to coordinate with us for the stream it online as well. So other reports from the convention.
Oh, I'll go. It was helpful for me as a new board member just to learn about a lot of different things. I also appreciated that it was online and I didn't have to take three vacation days, and now I, and I can still see all the sessions for the next year. So I'm going to a little bit each week just to continue to learn. One that I went to on equity, I think had a good takeaway, and it was 10 things that every school board member can be doing to support equity in their district. So I took a screenshot, and I'll send it to everybody, but that was helpful.
That would be great. Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Mr. Corburg, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, one that stood out to me was I did, it was actually a luncheon with the Wisconsin Black Historical Society, and it was a virtual tour of the, down in Milwaukee. And just learned a lot of very interesting things that I didn't know about black history in Wisconsin. And, you know, in southern parts of the Grant, Grant County and that kind of area, they actually were slaves. And you always think that Wisconsin's, you know, been a free state, and, but there are a lot of interesting things there, in there, that I hope our teachers know about it. So if they, if they end up teaching a session on something like that, that I'm sure there's some information online that they could get a hold of. It's definitely on a list of what I want to go visit when I go to Milwaukee the next time, whenever that can happen.
Thank you, Mr. Corburg. And honestly, I can't remember if we ever asked the superintendent to, we don't, do we? Okay. Well, then we'll go move on. Thank you, Ms. Como, for keeping me in line. All right. So now we're going to move on to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards 2021 Delegate Assembly Report.
Yes, and I attended that. It was a three-hour session online. There were a couple bugs at the beginning because they were trying to figure out how to vote, I mean, the voting process. Some people are having trouble getting their, you know, connections to work and things like that. But basically, you will notice that all the resolutions did pass. They are all attached in the, in the attachment there on the bullet item. And I think I mentioned at our last meeting, the one that really stood out to me was the school district mascot logo and imagery resolution, because last year, that pretty much went down in flames. And this year, it did not. And that, the vote, actually, I wrote the vote down because I was, had to do a double take. It was 182 to 67. So it was a pretty good, good, good measure, and I think it's, it's, it's good for, for the state to talk about these kinds of issues, to get school boards thinking about things. But other than that, I think everything passed. There was word change to one, one of the ones, and I can't remember exactly which one it was, but generally was informative. And I know Don, who worked on the resolutions, and so thank you for that. And again, I think it's, I think sometimes people have trouble to think that this is going to be law, or it's going to be submitted as a law, and it's, it's not. It's, it's what the WASD is going to promote if something comes up, and then they'll, you know, they will, they will also pursue some of these things on their own. So just a good reminder and a good way for us to keep beat of what's going on in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Corburg. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Corburg? All right. So we'll move to announcements, and we'll begin with Mr. Baggett.
Awesome. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. So as I mentioned last week, I surveyed Logan. I got 100 Logan responses, I got 100 responses, and all of that has happened to Logan administration to pass on to Logan teachers, but I'll leave you a thing that I want to share with you guys. Some concerns, citizens are having a high school, are stressed, expected difficulties in class, and the guidelines, social assistance, and difficulty socializing. A lot of students are stressed about getting coded. Fifty percent of the students that responded to this, they said that they were listed as a concern that other students were not following the guidelines. And fifty-four percent were concerned about the book thing for 75 in class. And several altered comments on that in the free response section that I included. So that's all I have, just the results of that survey.
Mr. Baggett, is it possible for you to share the results of that with the board? Can you hear me? I don't know if you, can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay. I can. You know your ass afterwards.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Baggett, got a question. So over 50% of the students are concerned. Where do you land exactly? I don't know if that's very, how do you feel about returning back to school, if you will?
Um, well, personally, I'll be staying online, and my opinion about returning to school, I do worry that a lot of other students have, will not follow guidelines. I have seen things on social media without naming names of people going into bathrooms and taking their masks off. And I think there will be some concern about that. It's, I'm excited and really nervous at the same time.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baggett. Laura, I can't see that far. Did Mr. Baines join us or not? Okay. All right. So then we'll move on to Mr. Corburg.
Yes, I asked Laura to attach the grants, awards ceremony information that I mentioned last, last week, or, yeah, we met last week, I guess it was. Was it two weeks ago? But basically, the, I mentioned that there's going to be four, four sites throughout the district where people will be able to come in for an hour to celebrate and hear about some of the grants that were handed out, as well as the honoring the people you see on, on the list there. And I know this was sent out to you, I think, as well as an email. So, but, but here you have it here, if you, if you can't find your email. And to register, it's free, of course. And I know this was sent out to you, I think, as well as an email. So, but, but here you have it here if you, if you can't find your email. And to register, it's free, of course. And all you have to do is click on one of those links and you will be registered to go to the session. If you haven't gone to this before, I would advise you to try to go because it's really, a really good uplifting event to see what our students, staff and teachers have done as far as with the grants money from the Public Education Foundation. And that's all I have for the week.
Thank you, Mr. Corburg. The only announcement that I have is just a reminder that we'll be back online next week.
Two weeks, right?
I'm sorry?
Two weeks.
We'll be back online next meeting and then we'll be here the next meeting and then we'll be back online the meeting after that. And then we'll see what happens. Okay. Any announcements from you Superintendent Engle?
Yes, first off, for this whole setup and arrangement, I would like to thank Laura Stagerold and Dan Levandowski for all of their hard work. I think we're able to do this in a safe way. So it's very exciting. And then I would just let folks know that we've got the middle school back in person today in a hybrid model. So half today and Monday, Tuesday, and then half on Thursday, Friday. So that's exciting for students to get back in person. We've got our ninth graders coming back on Thursday and Friday. It's kind of a soft landing. Get used to the new high school buildings that they'll be in for the first time. And then I think new students to the building as well have an opportunity to check those out as well. And then high school next week for hybrid learning as well. So exciting times. Things have been going well so far. We have had to use procedures and practices to keep folks safe, but folks know what to do and we've been able to follow those successfully. So very exciting. And that's all I have.
All right, are there any questions or comments for Dr. Engle before we move on? Are there any other announcements?
I'd just like to add that in my personal experience from my friends, from other students, even from teachers, I can get difficult to focus for 75 minutes a class, the difficulty all the time. And frankly, a lot of people don't have a schedule.
Thank you for that feedback. All right, the next item is the agenda planning.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 15th, 2021 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como to approve the February 15th, 2021 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. We'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Aye.
All right, next we're going to move to board debriefing. And Chandel has worked this evening, so he couldn't join us. So Mr. Corburg, would you mind stepping in?
Sure. Let's look at maybe one of the questions about some of the things that went well at the meeting. One thing I'd like to point out, I'd like to thank Mr. White for all of his work in the district. You know, the record that you have is quite amazing and you gave, you dedicated a lot of your life to this district. And that doesn't go unnoticed, I hope you know that. And, and we appreciate for what, what you've done for, for us. I know, working with you, whenever I had a question or whatever, I got an answer. And, and I appreciate that, that you were able to sometimes focus on a question that I might have that was either probably not that important, but you made it important. And, and I appreciate that. But anyway, I just wanted to say that because I didn't have an opportunity before. But as far as things that went well, I think, you know, something, an example that he, that Mr. White has given to, to us about what's good about our district and, and also the teacher that, that, that Dr. Hershey mentioned as well. We have a lot of longtime people here, which says a lot for our district and a lot of good things. And there's a lot, a long list of teachers I'm sure that we could, we could talk about. But anybody else have anything else that they want to mention about as far as what they felt worked well or, or any ideas of things that we could do to improve future meetings?
Yeah, so I'd echo that and then I'd also thank everybody that got this thing together. I like this way more than I like the, the other room, actually. So I really, really think that we owe you guys a deep gratitude. Thank you very much. And then happy Black History Month. And I think that'll be it for me. Thank you.
Is there any other comment or feedback? Jared.